Alright, Bismillah, Rahmani, Rahim, Nahmadu, Nusallim, Ala Rasoolihi Kareem, Ma Baad, Rabbish, Rahli, Sodri, Wa Asili, Amri, Wa Halu, La'qood, Atam, Li, San, Yafq, Ka'oli. So, before I get started, I just wanted to kind of gauge the expectation of the crowd here. Mashallah, you guys have had a very long day and it was Jumma, right? So, usually a program like this, what is the runtime for that? Is it 25, 30, 35? Any input? How many hands for 25? We're gonna do 25, 35, 25, 30, 35. How many hands for 25? Okay, 30. Alright, 35? Okay, so 30 minutes, Insha'allah, okay? So, we will complete at 9:30 because you know, when a guest speaker comes, oh yeah, and just milk it, you know? No, my intent is, Insha'allah, for us to share a reminder with each other that we can remember. And, Insha'allah, with this mindset, keep the next 10 days, 9 days in front of us. So, the title assigned to me was, Dhu'l Hajja, The Best Days of the Year, okay? So, I wanna set up the stage for you to understand where Dhu'l Hajja comes. So, all of the names in the Islamic calendar, okay? Let's start. Happy New Year with what? Muharram, then? Safar, okay, then? Rabbiul Awal, then? Rabbiu Thani? Jumada Awal, Jumada Thani? So, that's easy. Then? Yeah, we did Jumada Awal, Jumada Thani? Rajab. Rajab. Then? Sha'ban Ramadan, then? What? After Ramadan, which Meineke Rose? Shawwal, right? So Ramadan, we gotta get Sha'ban, Ramadan, Shawwal, that, we gotta get that down. Rabbiul Awal, 1, 2, J, 1, 2, we got that, alright? It's these months in the middle, right? So Rajab, Muharram, then? Sorry, Rajab, Sha'ban, Ramadan, Shawwal, then? Dhu'l Qa'ada. In the Islamic calendar, these 12 names, over centuries, they varied from the time of Ibrahim al-Aslam, but 150 years before the Prophet sallallahu alaihi salam's birth, his fifth ancestor up, Hilab, during one Hajj, all of the tribes, while they were there, they had a meeting to just, let's get this down once and for all. And even after that, there were still some nicknames for months, okay? Pre-Islam, then post-Islam. So, Dhu'l Hajj was the name of the month in which Hajj happened, okay? Now Ibrahim al-Aslam, from the reconstruction of the Kaaba, he put, he established the concept of the sacred months, okay? He established this concept that Hajj is open for everyone, the call has been made, alright? And the people of Makkah, their honor, the Quraysh, once the Quraysh got back in, they used to consider it their honor that they get to host everyone who comes. Like, you cannot be a greater host than Quraysh anywhere in the world, right? Anywhere in the Arabian Peninsula, this was their pride. Like, okay, who are you hosting? What are you hosting them for? So, their hospitality was something that they were proud of, okay? So anyways, Ibrahim al-Aslam designated this concept that in a certain time of the year, when Hajj is happening, there should be no war, no tribal warfare. Like, it doesn't matter what's going on, just pause. This universal, understood, abided by tradition was, that's it, pause. And even during this, there would be like bandits, okay? It's not war, bandits, right? So, for some Bedouin tribes, this is how their livelihood was. You know, they just get easy pickings and that's it. Oh, we're out of camels, okay? So, what would be the sensible thing to do? To go purchase or trade a camel? It's like, no, just go get it, right? Okay, I'm gonna get a Tesla. Okay, just go and just carjack someone. I got it, okay? So, there were four months that are known as Ashurul Hurum, okay? The months of, Ashurul Hurum, the months of sanctity, sacred months. And the rule of this month was no fighting. Okay, so of these four months, one of them is, let me just eliminate Dhu'l Hajj. Duh, it makes sense. What other two months do you think would make sense to pause warfare for Hajj? For Hajj? If we put pause on Dhu'l Hajj, so what makes sense? Which other months does it make sense for us to block to facilitate a safe Hajj? The one before and after? So Dhu'l Qa'ada, Dhu'l Hajj, and Muharram, these three continuous months are three of the four, Ashurul Hurum. And think about it, what does Dhu'l Qa'ada mean? The position that we assume at the end of prayer, when we recite the Shahud, or the middle one, what is that position called? Infiq. Al-Qa'ada. The sitting. Qaidah Akhira, right? Qaidah Saniya. Now we get it? Okay, so Al-Qa'ada. So Al-Qa'ada means to sit. The month of Al-Qa'ada means, sit your butt down. Sit. Put your sword down and get, just sit your butt down. That's it, we're done. And then obviously you have Dhu'l Hajj. And then in the Hajj results in this mass exodus of people who have just visited the house of Ibrahim al-Aslam, okay? So, they're going to go back with this honor and hence, this next month is when honor is spread. Muharram. So you have these three months. There was a fourth month. Anyone recall? Excuse me? Who said Rajab? I hear Rajab, Rajab? Rajab. Rajab is which number month? I know it, but let's see how quick I can get the answer, which numbered month? Seventh, okay? So, Dhu'l Hajja is 12, Muharram is first. Six months later, we gotta stop fighting for what? What do we have to start fighting for? Stop fighting for? That was the season when Ummrah visas were issued. Okay? So, you would visit the Kaaba for two things. You would visit it during Hajj and also do the rites of Hajj. And then you can also visit it, because look, okay, even for, even today, Hajj, right? If you go for Ummrah, it's a different experience. Hajj is a whole different ballgame, okay? And you can train it up and bus it up and air condition it up as much as you want, it's still a journey, okay? Imagine that's the only choice you had. Your experience of Haram, there was no concept of like Ummrah's, it was Hajj. So, the month of Rajab was opened up for people who wish to visit Hajj but don't have to travel all of the other places and tent up. Come, relax. Do your Ummrah. Obviously, Madinah is a thing for us, but traditionally, and then you're done. So Rajab would be that window. It was in the Ummah of the Prophet sallallahu alaihi wasallam, actually during the Prophet sallallahu alaihi salam's final Hajj, okay? The Prophet sallallahu alaihi salam is said to have done Ummrah four times total, okay? One Hajj, which was his final Hajj, and that also delayed by a year, okay? Fatih Makkah happened in the year, number eight. Nine was the first mixed 50/50 Hajj, right? The Mushrikins also had visa, they were there still. And then the Muslimin also went, Abu Bakr al-illahi was the leader of that. And then the 10th, sorry, yeah, the 10th year, that's when the Prophet sallallahu alaihi salam announced his Hajj. During the Hajj journey, okay? Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala revealed to the Prophet sallallahu alaihi wasallam, the Muslim Ummah received permission, okay, to do Ummrah on your Hajj trip. Okay? Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala gave this permission. And there's two ways to go about it. Either you get into the Ihram for both at the same time, which is called? The other one. You, okay, let me rephrase it. You get into the Ihram once for both of them without taking them out in between after completing Ummrah. That's Qiran, okay? Qiran. The Prophet sallallahu alaihi wasallam left for his Hajj in the state of Qiran. In that journey, Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala revealed the permission to do Tamatuh as well. So, we got one concession, you can do Ummrah as well. The other concession is, you can get out of your Ihram in between as well, which is called Tamatuh, okay? To take benefit, Mata. And the Prophet sallallahu alaihi salam expressed that had I had known, had this been permitted before, I would have done Tamatuh. So hence, which one's better to do, Qiran or Tamatuh? Well, Qiran because he did it, but Tamatuh because he wanted to do it. You get it? Okay, so it just depends on your situation. So, what was I getting at? The month of Rajab, these are four months, okay? So, Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala has put a system in place from the time of Ibrahim al-Aslam where the sanctity of this, so the sanctity of this time, okay? Where there's peace established. Then on top of that, what's another layer of safety? The fact that when someone is in Ihram, there are certain things they can't do that others can. Okay? So there's that, so there's no fighting, and anyone who's in the Ihram, they're not going to be a threat to society, peace, peace, peace. Like, you can't even shoo away a cat. Like, if you have something, if you're scared of cats and you're in Ihram, you better figure it out. You better walk away. You get away from the cat. Not, don't move the cat or hush the cat, okay? And I know kids, they love to like shoo pigeons away. They're kids, but the rule is, no. Everything must be at peace, okay? Now, these people are in Ihram, but then when you enter the circle of the Haram, there are certain things that you can't do whether you're in Ihram or not. It's the sanctity of the place, the sanctity of those people in Ihram, the sanctity and the safety of that entire space, this whole block, this chunk. Okay? It is in this that Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, the Prophet sallallahu alaihi wasallam has said, the best days of the year. Okay? Now, I don't mean to like, but you know, sometimes, especially during Christmas time, any place, any retail place you go to, you got Christmas carols going on, the most wonderful time of the year. The most wonderful time of the year for the Muslims is this, okay? So much so that Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala has taken oath on it. So this particular 10 nights, actually, it refers to the first 10 of Dhu'l Hajja, okay? Some Ulama mentioned that as far as nights goes, the last 10 of Ramadan, as far as days go, the first 10 days of Dhu'l Hajja. But then in the oath, Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala takes the oath of the nights of those days. Wal Layal in Ashar, the 10 nights of Dhu'l Hajj. Right? So, that means that in one way, the Fadhl and virtue of the 10 days of Dhu'l Hajj could bear on the last 10 nights of Ramadan, alright? So each one is, each one is very unique in its sanctity. So, the Prophet sallallahu alaihi wasallam has stated, okay, so before I get there, you're a Hajji, okay? You are preparing to go for Hajj, okay? Just imagine you go back just, what? 68 before that time, before commercial flight came into play? Okay? Mass commercial flight before that came into play? How did people do for Hajj? They either wrote on something that was an animal? Boat, okay, port Hajj? Or train, that came later too, right? And then when you get off the port, then traveling in the caravan to Hajj. So, you know, once upon a time, when people, you know, the concept of asking forgiveness and settling your debts and making wills and this and that, it comes from the fact that, you know, once upon a time, Hajj, like Hajj is a rough journey. You may not make it there, you may not make it back. And that's just how it was. It is what it is, it was what it was. And like the journey would be so long, like, okay, so how does it work? So every now and then you stop at an ATM, an ATM, what ATM? So people would conduct business, right? While you're traveling, whether you're with a caravan or not, you're in your Ihram, they would make a mark, or the bandit thing, okay? Bandits would raid. But there was a system in place from pre-Jahiliyah that animals that are being taken as a sacrifice to the Hajj, those animals were not messed with because they belong to God. They're going for the Hajj. And what, you're gonna wait for someone to raid you and then tell them, oh, no, no, this one is, no, they would mark it. How would they mark it, okay? Do they have paint? Do they have color? Do they have sharpies? They would make a incision, a slit in the animal, okay? Of the big animals. The camels, the cows. And then they would use its blood to make an X on it. These are marked. Yes, there's an incision, but this little cut is going to protect the rest of the animal, it is what it is, right? You can do Qurbani of a cut animal, right? But hey, at that time, it is what it is. And that's how raiders would know that, okay, we don't mess with these. Like, if you still raided that, then that's like really dishonoring, dishonoring. And the tribe, and they just, you know, they had some type of ghira, okay? So, you would understand that people doing this journey, okay? Yeah, so they would do business along the way. Some people would beg their way, and hence the Ayah in the Quran, what Azabah do, make provisions. Make arrangements for this journey. Like, this is not a journey that, okay, you know what? You just like, you're standing on a stage with a crowd, you just throw yourself on the crowd. And then expect everyone to pick you up and push you through. No, that's not how Hajj is done. You don't have the money for it, you don't have the savings for it, save for it. And even when you're gone, your family should have enough where they can stay afloat. Like, all of these considerations, then you make that journey, alright? Once upon a time, people would do business along the way, hey, I'm gonna be on the road for two, three months, what am I gonna do? I'm not going with bags of gold with me. So, you barter along the way, pick up something from here, sell it to someone, oh, I've always wanted a gray water bottle like that, they stopped making this color. Exchange, there's always something, you always had something where someone could buy off of you, alright? So it makes sense that the people are honored in this month, the Fadhila of Yom Arafa, right? The most detestable and abhorrent day, the most humiliating and rejected day for Shaytaan is the day of Arafa. Due to the amount of people who are being forgiven, right? Imagine you work really hard. You work really hard on something. You worked so hard, you kept everything clean, halal, and only to wake up one day, natural disaster, whatever, it's like, everything that you worked for is gone. And people do experience that. You know, I lived in New Orleans for 25 years, I'm a Katrina survivor, so I know what it feels like. And to know what it feels like when you wake up and it's just all gone. Look how hard Shaytaan works. He's got a whole team, planning, drawing board, the most experienced, you know, the most experienced worker, known, okay? He does all this to keep you astray. And then, just like that, it all gets reset. Oh. Imagine how humiliating it is for him on that day because of the amount of people getting forgiven. A person who goes for Hajj comes back like the newborn baby as long, what? A person who does Hajj and does not become vulgar, okay? Does not do evil, and in the Quran, Jidala, does not fight, okay? That's a reset. Now let me ask you something. Would you fathom anyone cursing in the house of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala? Okay, even if someone, you know, someone has a dirty tongue and you keep on saying certain words and you talk in your vernacular, just, you know, talking with the boys or whatever it may be. But then when you're in the Masjid, you're trying to like, oh, you're not gonna talk like that inside the Masjid even with that person. It's the Masjid. You think you would do something like that in Hajj, in Ihram? Why is there such a highlight in Hadith? About not being vulgar, not fighting, like who would dare? No. For those of us who have gone for Hajj, you know that Hajj is a journey even today in 2024, even with the planes and the service that is provided, it really, you will find yourselves in situations where your buttons are really being pushed. And certain things are getting under your skin. Like, you know, you understand, one of the things that I tell Hajjaj in my workshop, in my Hajj workshop, I said, listen, you gotta leave your American butt behind. You are not American over there. You don't think you can flash your passport and it'll be solved? No, you are nobody there, and you have to go with that. Like, leave your courtesy and common, all of these things, all of these etiquette and finesse, forget it exists. Go with the flow. The three most important words for a Hajji is deal with it. Deal with it, don't lose your cool, just deal with it, walk away from any type of situation, just don't let that. If you're a person who has a short fuse, don't let it happen. Because of this, there is a highlight. And despite this, you will see people like fighting in Hajj, right? Pushing and shoving in Hajj and it's like, like the things that would make someone say, Astaghfirullah, right? Those things in Hajj, okay? Because at the end of the day, humans are humans and everyone is there to be cleansed. That's why they're there, there's a reason why Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala has called them there. You don't go to Hajj because, oh, you know what? I got 12,000 left over this year, or 6, 8,000, whatever, let me go for Hajj. Yeah, yeah, right. That's not how it works. And even if you get that thought, it's because Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala is putting it in you, right? So, it's totally understandable that who was going there, so much merit and virtue. But it is the mercy of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala that he put merit and virtue in the time. We understood the space and the person, but in this time, why? So that this honor, so that everyone else who is rooting on for the Hajj, right? They are not void of virtue and merit as well. I got seven minutes. They are not void of virtue and merit as well. The Prophet sallallahu alaihi wasallam has said that there are no days of the year except for Dhu'l Hajj in which good deeds, doing good, Al-A'malul Salihu Fihi, doing any type of good deed is dearer and greater to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. This is the time of the year, the most wonderful time of the year. Now what does it mean by A'malul Salih? Any good deed. Be smiley faced more this month. Start saying Salaam, just instead of walking past people, Salaam alaikum, Salaam alaikum. If you made eye contact, Salaam alaikum with someone. Even if you don't know them, because like, so imagine like there's five people and I, Salaam alaikum, how you doing, right? So, you're getting my Salaam because I know you, because of that notoriety, no. The concept in Islam is, you say Salaam to people. Those you know, those you don't know, you say Salaam. So, be more Salaami, Salaam alaikum this month. Be more smiley this month, okay? You know how in the month of Ramadan, we have a certain like amount dedicated for Sadaqah and then, you know, we try to spread it on the 10 nights? Spread your Sadaqah. Make this like the 10 nights of Ramadan, where you're putting in that Sadaqah, pushing a little bit of Salaah. And not just the ritualistic worship, being nicer at home, being overall nicer. So you know in Ramadan, what's the vibe? Self-restraint, right? So if you think about it, there's over 2 million people who are going to be exercising self-restraint. And there is a merit in trying to copy that, how so? So, let me share with you another practice that we learn in Islam, that for, if you see the Hilal of Dhu'l Hajja and you plan on doing a sacrifice, okay? So if you are in Dhu'l Hajja and you plan on doing a sacrifice, then do not take from your nails, do not take from your hair. What does that mean? Similar to what, what does a person in Ihram do? They do not take, they do not pluck, take out from their hair, okay? They do not take out, like, you know, don't try to cut your nails and be nice and clean, no. The, you do that before, but the focus is so much on the remembrance of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, it's so much at the task at hand, don't worry about your appearances. Don't worry about your hair getting a little long, no, we're gonna shave that off, okay? Don't worry about all that, don't worry about your nails, don't worry about putting Khujbu, you know, in spite of that, like some, like fragrance, like in spite of that, it's so funny, not funny, but sad at the same time. Like, you know, people who are in Ihram, like, when they get into like the lobby area of a hotel or the clock tower and then like, there's these perfume places and then someone will come up, the worker of that perfume, seeing someone in Ihram, would you like to try this? It's like, no dude, what are you doing? Why are you offering Ehtir to someone in Ihram? Okay, he may be done coming back, it doesn't matter, like, just don't do that. And then you'll see some people like, oh, this is so good, right? It's not about looking good, it's not about smelling good, it's none of that, it's just about releasing the sin, the task at hand. But Allah, so you see that restraint? It is a merit to mimic that restraint. Now there are different spectrum of opinions, whether it's Mustaha, whether it's necessary, alright? That's a whole discussion, but you understand, like even in this, a type of Ihram, just from two things, right? That's where you will see people like, right, some people like, right before Dhu'l Hajja starts, got the haircut lined up, everything, and then it's gonna go just scruffy until Eid, and then two days after Eid, clean again. So that type of restraint, why? To mimic the Hajj. So Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala put this virtue in this month. I'm sharing with you one more Hadith. The Prophet sallallahu alaihi salam mentioned, you know, similar meaning in another Hadith. And then the Sahabah asked, even Jihad, like is this, is doing good in this, in these days more meritorious than Jihad fi Sabirillah? It was the not obvious answer. He said, Walal Jihadu Fi Sabirillah. It's not even greater than Jihad. And by, over here, this is referring to like being on expedition. Like being out there in an organized effort, in a group, on the offense or defense, whatever it may be, that active, on active duty, active duty, okay? The only exception is, so now when you are on active duty, there's two things. One is when you're in dormant mode, you're just stationed, right? Awaiting for orders, et cetera, et cetera. And then one is where you're in active combat. And that means, and what is the result of that? You can either come back alive or die. So in that situation, that means something was going on. There was a need that needed to be addressed and they were addressing this collectively as a Muslim Ummah and someone died in that as a Shaheed. The Prophet sallallahu alaihi salam said, the only time Jihad surpasses the merit of this is if a person goes with himself and his Mal and doesn't come back with anything meaning, that's it, he gives his life. So this shows us how meritorious this time of Hajj is, like there's blessings for everybody. And then it comes in the form, and I'm not gonna talk about the Qurbani part, but in my minute and a half left, the aspect of fasting on the day of Arafa. Fasting on the day of Arafa. So, we know that on the day of Arafa, Dhuhr and Asr are combined at Dhuhr time. And then Maghrib and Ishra are And then Maghrib and Esha are combined at the late time, not in Arafa. Leave. Pray Maghrib whenever you get there. So in Dua, the act of Dua for Arafa, Al-Hajj Arafa, Hajj is all about Arafa, it's, that's the Hajj. And it's called Wukuf because a person is meant to stand and the Prophet ﷺ stood and sat and took a rest, but standing, standing and making Dua like this. All right? Dua is so important at that time. Think about it. That Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala moved Asr out of the way and pushed Maghrib out of the way. Because the, you know, before Maghrib, what do you gotta do then? You gotta prepare for Maghrib, you gotta stop making Dua to prepare for Maghrib, no. Do Dua till the sun sets. Milk every minute of it, then go. And then you prepare for Maghrib over there. Allah opened a window for uninterrupted Dua, the prayers that are not moved otherwise were moved so that it creates this huge window for Dua. That much blessing. To fast on that day, to be from amongst the fasting ones when all that is coming down. This is why we fast on the what day? Ninth of the Hijjah, the day before Eid. It's not fasting for them, but it's fasting for everyone else. So definitely make it a point to fast this coming, not this, but next, what? Saturday. Okay? Make it a family thing. Make it an Iftaar thing at your home. Right? And we ask Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala to, that we also find ourselves at the end, at the tail end of the Hijjah as the forgiven, as those who are reset. We ask Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala to grant all of the brothers and sisters who have either left or planning to leave for Hajj from our communities, we ask Allah to grant them a safe journey, a blessed journey and a fruitful stay and a Maburur and a Maqbul Hajj. And we ask Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala to allow all of them to remember their brothers and sisters over here, their family members who are rooting them on. And to remember all of our brothers and sisters in Gaza and Sudan and all over the world. And we ask Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala to allow those who have not gone for Hajj, the means and the ability and capacity to go for Hajj. And make those means and that capacity available soon. We ask Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala to allow all of us to go again to the house of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. May Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala accept our Dua, accept our Ibadah, accept our Qurbani. And may Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala allow us to follow the footsteps of Ibrahim al-issalam who served as an inspiration for what we are commemorating. Ameen, Ameen ya Rabbul Alameen. Subhanallah wa bihamdhi. Subhanakallahumma wa bihamdek. So that was thirty-two minutes. On purpose, because I get a two-minute uh uh break for being a guest. All right? Salaam alaikum.